Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 30th, and we're going to have a town of Woodfinn work session. We will only focus on what is on this agenda in front of everybody. The public is invited to attend, and we are being streamed and filmed. Has everyone looked at the agenda? Are there any issues with it, or is there a motion to approve it?
Make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Agenda is approved. I do not see anything on the consent agenda, so we'll move past that. Okay, new business. Take it away, Shannon.
All right. Well, thank you very much for everybody being here today. Our goal for the work session today is to re-review where we were with the town hall feasibility study. And we completed that study, I think, at the end of 2023, early 2024. And once that study was completed, which focused on redeveloping town hall and expanding our potential workspace. And I'm going to review sort of the details of that feasibility study, just to kind of refresh everybody's memory. But when, after that feasibility study was completed, the council made a decision to hold off on moving forward with any specific plans because we still had our very large Riverside Park capital improvement project that had not been completely funded yet. And so there were still, there was still some financial uncertainty around the park, but we knew that we would likely be closing that gap in the, you know, in the coming year. However, Hurricane Helene then intervened and pushed not only the park timeline off, but also created some additional financial uncertainty. So for this most recent budget cycle, we again discussed this and again decided to wait another year. So this has been pushed off now for two years. But what I realized is that particularly in light of the hurricane and some of the new considerations that have come out around community cohesion and resiliency, that there are some things that we should probably be thinking about now and starting to plan for in order to be able to take action in another year or so. So this, the purpose of this session is just to sort of review the feasibility study, look at what, what are the specific needs that we're trying to address? What are the goals that we're trying to achieve? And then what additional information do we need in order to make a decision? And then I kind of lay out some steps that we can review at the end for how to move forward from here. I would like to say just on the outset that staff is not particularly married to any of these steps. We also do not have a preferred outcome, so please don't ever interpret any response to any questions as, you know, wanting to kind of steer you in one direction or another. We really, truly do not. I think there are multiple positive outcomes or decisions that could be made that would meet, satisfactorily meet, our needs. And so it's not really a staff-driven thing. We really want this to be a council and community-driven decision. So, so with that, I'm just going to move on. So first, just to kind of quickly review the conditions of our town hall. Sorry. This is not, Marie, this is not showing up on here, so I can't get that Adobe Acrobat to go away. That's how you do it. Thank you. So this building was built in 1987, and it is a very economical, no-frills, basic building. It very well served the town's needs and the staff's needs for many, many years. But we are at a point where the integrity of the building is starting to come into in question. We have certain accessibility challenges related to the building, and we have significantly outgrown the space. So I believe this is about a five or 6,000-square-foot building, and, you know, we're significantly kind of doubled up in many offices. So you can see some of the pictures here that just kind of illustrate some of the site challenges. A few more images of the building showing areas where we've had, you know, just sort of regular wear and tear, and the building is kind of worn out. We've had fairly significant investments over the last three years in various maintenance projects around this building. HVAC probably being the most significant. But we've had a number of electrical repairs, plumbing repairs, roof leaks, leaks around the windows, things of that nature, clogstorm drains. So it's been a challenge, and at some point, the investment in the building, it's a little bit like having a car that's kind of reached its age. At some point, it doesn't make sense to keep fixing that car, and you have to consider something newer. So we're approaching that with this building, I think, based on the amount of money we've spent on just trying to keep it workable. So, so here, I've just kind of enumerated some of the things that are represented in those images. We have some accessibility issues. We have no more office or workspace, which limits our ability to add additional staff. We have an extensive repair history. We really don't have any gathering space for the public indoor or outdoor. Well, we have a little bit outdoor. We have Roy Pope Park and the pavilion, but that's really about it. The technology setup is not very efficient, could be significantly improved. For our police, we're very interested in pursuing accreditation. This building will not meet some of the criteria of that.
As a police department structure?
Yeah, just, they have certain standards that have to be satisfied for security, for evidence, and just, just the constraints of this building are going to make it very difficult to, to meet those standards. And then-
That is part of the not accredited company.
We are not accredited, and we are pursuing it. And then, I, I, less conflicting uses. It's not to say that admin and PD can't co-locate in a building. In fact, I think in a lot of instances, that's optimal. But because of the space constraints, we have issues with, you know, police having to conduct interviews, but we're holding meetings in our conference room, and, and we just have some challenges there. We just kind of overlap a little more than we would like. Yes, sir.
And I would, I would add number eight, security. With buildings totally unsecure, it makes me very nervous.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure it does you.
Yes. And I kind of put that in with the accreditation, because I know that that's one of the, the issues, but yes, that, that is very true. So for all of these reasons, the leadership in, in the town of Woodfinn decided to pursue a town hall feasibility study. And so that, as I mentioned, was completed in 2023, early 2024. So just to remind everybody about the process. So we started with a request for, actually, it's a request for qualifications, because individuals who conduct feasibility studies are typically licensed professionals. So it's not an RFP, it's an RFQ. And through that process, we select the most qualified design consultant. And then after that, you negotiate your contract. Then we formed a steering committee at the advice and guidance of the consultant, and we had staff and council representatives, and the consultant kind of helped walk the steering committee through different considerations of a feasibility study. So I mentioned the consultant. We worked with LS3P, a local firm here that has national offices across the country, very experienced in civic design, and they, they did a great job, and they were great to work with. They performed a number of different functions. They looked at available real estate. They walked the steering committee through site selection. They performed a space needs analysis that identified a minimum of 16,500 square feet to meet our current and a little bit of our future needs. There was some debate in this space needs assessment process, step of the process, where it, some were of the opinion that you really should plan for more space, closer to 25,000 square feet, but we decided to pull that back for a few reasons, and I think that was probably the right decision, so we're settling in around 16,000 square feet. And then lastly, once we identify what our space needs are, the steering committee works on identifying the different goals and design strategies that we would use to kind of start to build a concept plan for redesigning the site or redeveloping the site. So in that process, the steering committee worked to identify six project goals. And so I'm just going to quickly go through the six goals. The first was to create a 21st century workplace for staff and elected officials, and I would add members of the public. So maybe even more important would be accommodating, you know, those public interests and needs as well in the building. So this building doesn't quite meet our needs today, and we certainly want to consider what additional needs we will have in the future as the town grows and as the staff grows. We want to reflect Woodfinn's culture and values. So we want it to have, the, the, the site to have a small-town feel, but we want it to, you know, illustrate the pride that we have in, in Woodfinn. It needs to be easy to access, and there was some discussion amongst steering committee members that it should sort of reflect this outdoor recreation sort of direction that the town seems to be going in. And I think most importantly, it really, we really want the building to have that gateway presence, so that as people drive down Elk Mountain, you really under, you, you recognize that as a civic building. You know that you're entering the town of Woodfinn, and that this serves as sort of a, a, you know, a gateway marker for the community. And given the, the provenance that we have, I think that, that is easy to accomplish. The third goal was showcase sustainability through design. So we would look at an energy-efficient, low-maintenance building or construction type. The building is strategically positioned to be south-facing, so that we could design a building that is a low-tech passive solar, so you can help condition your space by taking advantage of the solar aspect, and we have the good fortune of the building being well-positioned for that. We would also want to look at other climate resiliency and green practices, and we want this to be a public model for environmental stewardship. So it doesn't have to be a super-high-tech building with solar panels and wind and electric charging stations. A simple passive solar design can accomplish a lot, just using good insulation, using the right kind of windows, things of that nature can accomplish a lot. So I think you start there, and then as your budget allows, you look at other features. We want to create a welcoming place for the community. I would say this was probably one of the highest priority goals that came out of our discussions, recognizing that, and this is one of my big takeaways from Hurricane Helene, is that the, the more cohesive and the stronger the community, the more resilient the community. So it begs the question, how do you build cohesion? How do you build that strong community? And there's lots of ways to do that, through civic engagement, through, you know, faith institutions, through, you know, clubs, that sort of thing. But one of the easiest, lowest-bar things to achieve is creating spaces where people can gather. So if your neighbors can get together and cross paths outside, go for a walk together, meet to have a picnic lunch, whatever it is, if you have those spaces, then people interact, and they start to get to know each other, and then those relationships are formed. So having spaces that can informally, informally support events or activities, so an outdoor space and an indoor space. There was a good bit of discussion about how do you design a council chamber in a way that it's flexible, so that it can double as a community room for people to rent for parties or other special events? Having outdoor space that could support, you know, community events, and then having all of those other informal activity spaces as well. And all of that hopefully would build a sense of civic pride and belonging and identity in the town of Woodfinn. Fifth goal was to prioritize approachability, accessibility, and safety. So both on the site itself, making sure that we have good pedestrian access, prioritizing that pedestrian access over vehicular access, and of course, making sure that the building itself is safe and secure. And then the last goal was to create a one-stop shop for residents to engage with civic services. So we want the building to be convenient, easy to access, and a place where people can get information or services, and ideally consolidated in a single facility, but that's not always possible. But ideally, that was, you know, what we thought was best, and that was what this plan contemplated. So once those goals were identified, the consultants looked at different site options. And before they looked at town-controlled property, they did look at the real estate market in, in the town. Of course, you want your town hall to be in the town of Woodfinn, so we are somewhat limited in, in what was available. But particularly with the interest of an, an investment in the area around the river, they were particularly keen on seeing if there was an opportunity somewhere around the river. And long story short, there wasn't. Given our space needs, and not just the building, but the outdoor space needs for community gathering, parking, all of that, it just, there just wasn't a site that was available. There were sites available. There were, there was property on the market, but not properties that were big enough or in the right location, or that would, you know, meet all of the needs that we were looking for. So that brought the consultants back to the two town-controlled sites. This site here, existing town hall at 90 Elk Mountain Road, and then the community center property at 23 Community Road. So you can see the community center property here and town hall property here. They both have their pros and cons for town hall redevelopment. When we tried to identify the most important criteria and then tried to weigh those criteria, town hall site came out just, just barely ahead of the community center property. They're, like I said, they both have their pros and cons, but I think town hall ultimately went out because of its strategic location near the interstate, easy to access. It has that sort of, the potential to be that gateway into, into the community, whereas the community center is much more tucked in, not as visible. So I think it, for those reasons, it sort of went out. We also have existing Roy Pope Park, which everybody felt was a huge asset and that we should try to capitalize on. So ultimately, we went with Site B. So now we have our project goals, and now we've identified our site. So how you kind of bridge between those two things is to develop some design strategies and then apply those design strategies to your site. So there were four key design strategies that came out of the steering committee discussions. The first was placement, sort of prominent placement on Elk Mountain Road for peak visibility. So for all of the reasons I've already discussed, accentuating pedestrian accessibility, having that strong civic presence on the road, being highly visible, coming off the interstate or coming down the road. And it also provided more interior space to be able to do all of the other, designing for the community outdoor space, as well as sort of tucking the parking back behind the building and de-emphasizing that. The second strategy was to create a network of communal spaces. Again, prioritizing those meeting and gathering places where people can get together. So we have an area behind the building focused for the staff. You've got that entryway. It's described as a sculpture plaza here, but it could be just sort of a grand staircase or a place for people to hang out and have lunch, or it could include sculpture or artwork of some kind, but something that sort of draws people in on the front of the building and kind of accentuates the entry. Then you have the communal plaza. That's that big outdoor gathering space. You've got the kids' activity of Roy Pope Park, and then sort of that nature-focused activity, which is really more just pedestrian paths and walking trails, or maybe an outdoor area. And then, of course, we want to thread all of those together. So another reason that town hall came out slightly ahead of the community center is that it was recognized to be well-positioned for additional pedestrian connections out into the community. So there are plans for pedestrian connections. Now, these are long-term plans, but connections that go north towards Weaverville Road and then south towards the river. So the town hall site has the potential to serve as sort of a hub. And then, of course, within the town hall property, we want people to be able to circulate and move around. And so you can see this sort of pedestrian connections. And then, related to that is, or related to the first goal of pushing the building out to the road and kind of emphasizing its position, is we would de-emphasize vehicular traffic, and we would kind of pull that off the road and put it behind the building. I'll just point out, it says employee parking behind the building. That's not exactly right. We, it's employee and visitor parking. We would reserve some space for people who are just sort of quickly coming in and out of the building. Also, for accessibility purposes, we would have some visitor space. But the bulk of the visitor space, really for the community events and for other potential community uses or for park use, would be that larger visitor parking that would be further down in the property. So those are the design strategies, and then the consultants moved towards doing a space analysis. So that is, they, you perform that by interviewing all of the staff and all of the departments to learn what their functions are and what their specific needs are. And as a result of that space needs analysis, they, we determined that police have the greatest percentage of needs and space needs, about 50%. Kind of makes sense. They're the largest department in the town. There's 21 people operating out of this building compared to the eight admin staff. Now, a lot of the police are not here. They're in opposite shifts, so they're not always in the building, or they're out in the field, but we still have that many people coming and going. And police also have some unique needs that the rest of town hall staff don't have. And then you've got your administrative staff, about 25%, and then again, another quarter or 25% dedicated to community use, and that includes the council chambers. And you can see some of the totals of space that were identified in that study and what some of those things would include. And for those who kind of like that visual, I'll draw your attention to the blue, green, and red building block that's kind of in the upper right. That, it could be interpreted as being three separate buildings. It's not. It's one building with three different functions. You can see the police function in blue is twice as large as the admin function in green, which is about the same size as the community function. And then that matches that space needs analysis. The building in yellow is a placeholder, really. That additional future community building, we just asked the consultants to identify a spot on the site where we could add another building in the future, because you don't want to try to figure that out, you know, 20 years from now. You want to be able to identify where would it make sense to put a building now if you're going to go through this process. So what that building might hold in the future, whether that is additional town functions or if that's some other community service, we don't know yet. It was just a spot where they identified that would make sense to add another building. Then you can see there's a picnic shelter. It looks like a building. It's not. It's just meant to be just sort of a, a marker of where a picnic shelter might get relocated So since completing the feasibility study, as I mentioned earlier, we decided to hold off a year as we, you know, completed, got further along in our construction process and with the park, and kind of knew exactly where we stood on the financials, from a financial perspective. Then Hurricane Helene happened exactly a year ago, and that all got kind of muddled. In addition to pushing off construction of the park, so now the park's been delayed as a result of the hurricane, and then we have some additional financial uncertainty as a result of the hurricane. So we have some additional challenges that we hadn't anticipated or hadn't planned for. And, and some of those, you know, obviously finances and potential damage or, or getting us, our facilities restored is one challenge. But the hurricane has a way of people, of getting people to think a little bit differently. Do we still have the same priorities we had a year ago before Helene? And so that's a question I think we have to ask, ask ourselves, and we'll be revisiting when we get further on in the work session. We also realize more now as a result of Helene that our staff have limited capacity. So for, to undertake another major project means we need to have other projects off our plate. But while there are challenges, there are often opportunities. There is an extraordinary amount of grant funding available right now. Now, most of that funding is focused on housing or infrastructure, but there is a piece of that funding that could potentially be applied either to technical assistance, to a resiliency center, even potentially to community facilities. Understanding the details of those grants and figuring out how a project like this might align can be challenging, and we may, you know, and just given our timeframe, we may not be able to capitalize on the availability of some of this funding, but there are likely other grants that we could potentially look at. It might be a grant for something as simple as electric vehicle chargers, but there will be these opportunities, I'm confident. And then it also, the hurricane has a way of, potentially even through these grants and other priorities, advancing other goals that we hadn't even considered, whether that's affordable housing or those community spaces, or creating a resource hub. So how do we move forward from here? So this is something that I've spent some time on. I, you can really get in the weeds, and it can get super complicated if you want to go that way. I try to keep it simple. And again, I'll just emphasize, I'm not set on this path. This is just something I want to offer as, at least a starting point for the discussion for council. We can explore other ideas, but I just wanted to share this with you, just to kind of help get the juices flowing. So step one would be working together, and that's, that's where we are today, step one, to identify the specific needs that we're trying to address. We have done that to some degree as a result of the feasibility study and probably through other discussions as well, but I think it's worth revisiting specifically with this in mind. And then also part of step one, what are the goals that we hope to achieve? The needs and the goals often go together, but they're not exactly the same thing. So you may have a need for creating a safe environment, but the goal may be achieving accreditation. So they're related, but they're not exactly the same thing. So we want to think about the goals as well. And then lastly, what additional information do we need to make that informed decision? So what are we missing? What, what do we need to know in order to be able to think about what our options are? And again, some of that's been identified, but we'll spend some time today revisiting that. And then, and I'm going to come back to step one here in a moment, but how, continuing on the steps for how we move forward. So once we get through the work session today, then I would say step two would be gathering the information that we identify that we need, and then exploring what those potential options are. So we're looking at the goals, the needs, all of that data, and what is, what kind of options do we have that might address the needs to the greatest extent and accomplish as many goals as possible? What are those options? So staff would help to try to identify what those are. And we have a period of time, I, I put on here between October and January, where we can have a back-and-forth conversation about that, whether it's the data that is collected or what those potential options may be. And I just would propose that I include that in our regular monthly meetings, either as part of my town manager update or as a new business item that we can just sort of revisit periodically until the winter. In the winter, I think by then, we should have enough information that we can really start to evaluate those options. And I, council typically holds their annual retreats in the winter months, January, February, so I would suggest that perhaps we include a discussion about the options, evaluating the options for town hall, and use an outside facilitator to help facilitate that conversation and, and walk council members through a consensus-building process. Maybe that will lead straight into choosing a preferred option. It's hard to know at this stage, depending on how that retreat discussion goes. So step four might be, or in between step three and four, may be gathering some additional information, asking some additional questions, and then returning to make a final selection for a preferred option based on that information. I think we can have those discussions as part of our budget work sessions that are, that would be held between March and May, because that's when we're looking at all of the finances and trying to really understand what the town's priorities and projects will be in the coming year. And then step five is initiating action. I put July, July 1st being the beginning of the new fiscal year, so if, as a result of all of these discussions, we know how we want to proceed, we could begin in that new fiscal year. It's just a convenient milepost to kind of shoot for. It does not mean we start construction or renovation in July. It means that we know what path we're on, and we start to put things in motion, whether that is advertising for an RFQ for architectural services or engineering services, or talking to the LGC about financing, or whatever it is, but we start working up towards that plan. And of course, one option is we don't do anything. We continue where we are. We, rather than build a new town hall, we could look at renovating buildings. I don't want to get ahead of myself, but there are multiple options. And so when I say I think there's plenty of good solutions, I mean it, and I'm not trying to kind of push us to new town hall construction, but again, we'll examine the goals and, and just see what makes the most sense. what makes the most sense. So, I'm going to go back to our step one, which I think we can spend some time today on this step, which is identifying the specific needs we're trying to address, the goals that we hope to achieve, and what information do we need to make an informed decision. So, you can see the tried and true poster boards on the wall, you all have sticky notes in front of you. If we want to just take, you know, five, 10 minutes and look at needs, talk about needs, we can do that. I've put it, I've added on the board already some of the things that have been discussed previously. So, if you want to get up and take a look, feel free, if, if you feel very strongly about one of those and you want to emphasize it, feel free to stick your posted note on one of those and say the same thing. They're not listed in any kind of priority order, we're not weighing those at this time, we're just identifying them. So, just take a moment to brainstorm and think about what you like. We'll do, we'll dedicate time to needs, goals, and information. Please ask any questions of myself or other staff, be happy to do that, and then we can take a little time and discuss the results of this exercise when you're all done. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Look at those needs, it's hard to say. They're all important. I just took a quick look and I find it hard to think, oh, this one over that one. Are you, there are two points I'm going to go possibly adding needs and are we ranking these?
Not ranking, just adding. Just trying to identify what are the needs. But if you feel really strongly about one, you're welcome to emphasize it in whatever way you think's appropriate.
Can you elaborate on the first bullet under needs, consolidated?
Location for info and services. So, just having like, it was described as a one-stop shop in the feasibility study, having one place where people can go for information or assistance.
And I have a question about that. As Chadi updated, this building is, we currently do have?
Yeah, we do sort of have a one-stop shop, yep. Now, the one thing we haven't done, and we've talked with Woodfin Water, is potentially locating a customer service rep from Woodfin Water here, so everybody could, you could pay your water bill or ask questions and do it here.
But employed by Woodfin?
Yes, employed by Woodfin, they would just be co-located here in this building, they would have, yeah.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah, it's an idea, I don't know that it, it will come to fruition, but it was something that we talked about.
Well, I guess that's not true.
I guess not. No, I would be, though, I can possibly rank these.
Yeah, I think we can consider ranking at another bigger point. I think right now, just trying to get as many ideas out as possible, so we don't feel like we missed something that we should have considered.
Okay. So, you're looking more for additional?
Additional.
Okay.
I'll get some tape.
Tape would be good. Oh, who's is this? It's okay to do, why didn't you get him to stick?
That's better, Stacey.
Maybe so, maybe it's.
Witches? No. So, why does that activate the?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's great. Okay, thank you.
Um, I'll be able to scan for anybody, please.
Oh, it's already there.
It's okay, it's okay, don't worry, if it's already there, if you.
Don't let that sign me or.
And if you're not sure if it's a goal or a need, don't worry about it, just the important thing is just to get it out there and on the paper and we'll, we'll find out soon.
We have, we write some tape on.
Yes. So, yours are, that's where. I think this one's cutting these out. Your kind of that, like, one sticky is not going to say.
I need you. And.
Yeah.
And this particular issue for me, it's not an extra need, I think all of these are related to this. And are we really needs, goals, and right now?
I'll, yeah. She did everything. I'll take as much time as you guys.
What do you guys do?
We, I really want to.
I see.
We did that myself, it must be helpful.
Assistant Town Manager owns this, separate from all of that.
Yeah.
Just an idea?
Yeah.
I hear you loud and clear.
I know, I'm stuck.
We can't be stuck here forever.
I don't know enough about police accreditation. Shannon, to know, I know it my own, but I don't know how important it is, I'm assuming it is important, but I'd like to hear a bit about as down the time we're doing, we talked about that later.
I think, we can talk about it now, I mean, maybe do your.
Okay.
Maybe go through this exercise and we'll talk about it, or Jack, you must have come in. I would say there are a lot of aspects of this accreditation, but what we're specifically referring to here is space needs, so.
Well, I was thinking more, but I was thinking more, the pros and cons, I assume there are benefits of having your police department accredited, but I have no idea if they are certain.
So, police accreditation is based off the, off of best practices in the field, either identified through legal cases that have been waged against other departments or experiences that other agencies have, and when you can put policies and processes in.
I don't think we can do anything.
That can reduce your risk and liability.
We can have to pay.
And it's a.
Yeah.
As an example, the legal maintenance risk management program offers a 15% reduction in our insurance base forward, once we get off down to their program.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, that's a.
Eye in the sky, yeah.
Anticipate.
Yeah, we have to recognize.
Less likely to be sued.
I think that, that hasn't been made really clear.
Because we have best practices.
Thank you.
It also improves your level of professionalism and encourages more community engagements, and we're kind of talking about this earlier.
Devils advocate. Some of what you mentioned, I get 15% discount. Some of what you mentioned, I believe is important, and the question is, we can do that without necessarily applying for an receiving accreditation. Unless, that is, I'm not really interested in the benefits of actually receiving accreditation. You mentioned discount, you mentioned possibly saying that there might be less legal liability if your department is accredited, because there's a stamp that you have, not just said you have best practices, even though there's a stamp.
Right. And that's like for me, I've been involved in police accreditation since 2005, so I, I know a lot about it. Could I get our policies and processes in line with the practice? Absolutely. But having an extra set of eyes to come in and assess you and unbiased, uninformed people to come in, I think is a really good process. There's also a gamble, or things that are, that might help your ability to recruit.
Right, that's where I was going to go.
That's in the community and the trust of the community, that we're proud of professionals. You know that they've gone through this, 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 this. If you may have all of those things without complete information, but there's no way for people to know that you have the tools. One other thing I think is notable, that North Carolina accreditation is voluntary right now, and I would want to do it because I want to be setting a standard for providing police service, not just like following behind what anybody else does. But I would not be at all surprised as if, and if it becomes mandatory in the next decade or so. I don't think it'll happen in the last year, but I think it'll happen for the next generation to offer.
That would be for somebody that may be.
Most likely, yes. And I, and I'd rather be on the front end of all that than on the back. Yeah, and, and accreditation, for the purposes of this conversation, we're thinking more about the space needs or the physical facility needs. I think there's some departments for security and.
For security of your building, for security of your records, for maintaining evidence that the particular client.
And, and we're not where we need to be with that, so there's going to have to be some improvements.
I have a question for Shannon. If I think about what I'm looking at, for me, what I think is really important for the town of Woodfin, one of the things, is having a sense of identity as a town, as a community. What I mean by that is, my experience of the town, in part because there's not downtown, in part because our community center is ramshackle and now has been improved somewhat, but it's a monosoli school, is that we don't, we don't have a lot of experience, we have some communal activities, we have a lot of cheap, trying to build night out. But people in Woodfin sometimes don't even know they're Woodfin until they, if they do deal with the tax. That sense of identity, which I pretty much, since I was a kid in that small town, I grew up in, oh, this is, I live in Wilsonboro, and, you know, here are the outlines, we have these events, people know that we're Wilsonboro. I think Woodfin is relatively young and very disparate, obviously. So, for me, one of my interests is, and all of this feeds into that, by the way, it's not. One of my interests is creating an identity for the town, for residents, but I don't know if that's a need or a goal.
I'd say a whole, probably, but like I said, it doesn't, more important if I could get the thought on paper than.
You see that just in, like, our address, so many people list.
Yes.
Addresses Asheville, we said Woodfin.
Because you're male.
And these, and you have developers who have neighborhoods in Woodfin, but their marketing.
The range is more special.
Asheville, yeah, and they tie themselves to Liverdale and Asheville and they're sitting.
That's a perfect example. And that's not going to happen overnight, you know, it's not, but this is something that I.
Well, that is all I have. Oh, I'm sorry, Phil's still going. Okay. We'll take a few more minutes.
So, what if it becomes obvious the first of the year that it's going to be another year?
I know.
Do we just freeze? Do we stay paused?
I don't know. I think, I mean, how can we attach our hands to something when we've got so much there wide open that we have no clue what's going to happen?
So, is it a function of personnel?
No, it's a function of teamwork, yes. So, we can finish what we started.
Yeah, so, no, no, not to, so this is a public meeting.
We understand that.
Oh, okay. It'll, it'll be part of our discussion. Yes, yes, yes. Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
You're picking this up, right? Our discussion?
It should be, yeah, it should be. If you speak into your microphones, but I, I didn't mean to call you out, but like, when you have a little conversation where you turn your head, then it's not going to show up, it's not going to be heard on. No, I fully intend to. Say all the same. Say all of it out loud.
Two things, we're, we're being picked up and you can, you know, have a, you can have a sidebar technically, as long as you keep it to a minimum, but it's got to be discussed, it's the elephant in the room.
Yeah, it is, and that's, that's my concern, so. Yeah, and I'm sorry, I didn't really even hear what you were saying.
It's okay.
No, no, no.
Thanks for keeping us.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, I am fine with that, yeah. Phil, are you done?
I'm done.
Would you say though, on accreditation of the police department on its own, is that a need or is that a nice to have?
I, I mean, it, it will depend on your perspective, but.
Say that again?
I, I, it'll depend on your priorities. I, I mean, as a town manager, I would say it's more of a need than a nice to have, but. And I agree with that.
Phil, save us some money.
Me too.
From the perspective of the town and the ability to recruit and retain officers.
More than money, more than salary?
No. Equal to?
No, I heard a no. Every time I talk to an officer, all I want to talk about is money, 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 money.
Well, that's true, too.
I worked for the chair for 10 years. If you look at the statistics, there are about as many non-accredited agencies as there are, there's many quality agencies that are not accredited for a variety of reasons. There's some costs related to it, it's hard to get. Is it the best-case scenario in every conversation? Absolutely. If you're accredited, it, it reduces liability, you go to court, people can't say, well, they're, you know, you know, this half-baked group that goes around doing what they want, that's just not true, they have sound policies that have been highly vetted and it's, it's all good.
How long does it take, that process? Is it like a, a college, a new master's degree being accredited by an education association? That can take a year or two, right, Phil?
Yeah.
I'd say 18 to 36 months, depending on the program that you're pursuing.
For that initial accreditation or for actual review?
Or a review and a certificate.
And then once you get that certificate, presumably a visit, it picks them every five years?
Yeah. For the Lees Risk Management Program, you have to provide a proof of compliance annually, and for the North Carolina Accreditation, it would be every three years.
But essentially, is there a consensus that we want to add this as a goal? As part of the process, this big process, would, one of the end results would be, Woodfin Police would get full accreditation?
Well, it is on there as a goal, police accreditation.
It, I mean.
Sorry, I missed it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it could be a goal, yeah. But there are different ways of achieving that, so it doesn't have to be new Town Hall construction. So, there are different options that we can explore, and given some of the financial uncertainty that has been presented to us with, between the park and just having such a large capital project that's still unfinished, combined with some remaining uncertainty about Hurricane Helene and potential recovery needs there, and what are some of our other priorities and some other projects that we may want to consider moving forward? So, again, I don't want to push us, we're not trying to kind of steer you in any particular direction, we're just trying to inspire the conversation so that we can start to think about the options.
The chair's going to recognize the vice mayor.
And this is what the mayor and I were briefly talking about, the elephant in the room. Yes, and that is the fact that we have yet to finish the projects we already have in place. I have, I agree with everything on all of these, but what worries me most is we have no idea what, if anything, we're going to get from FEMA to finish what we have not completed. Yeah. We have gone backwards, of course, because of the hurricane, and I'm scared of us moving forward with anything financially until we know what we're going to get stuck with. And if we start diving into something that's costing us money, when we're going to have to back up and figure out how to even meet the minimum of what we already agreed to, how can we take on some? how can we take on something else? That's my fear.
Right. And so we are, I'm not, we're not pushing for a decision today or anytime soon. And some of the additional information that is needed is the status of the park and the status of our FEMA PA projects. I do have a little bit of good news, I think, on those fronts. We submitted today, just before this work session, we submitted our updated grant request to Buncombe County for the passive recreation funds. If we, and it's a little bit of a spoiler alert, it's more or less the same amount of money that they had recommended to the town last year. So if we are successful in securing that funding, combined with our Great Trails grant that we received earlier this year, we are getting very close to being able to complete options one, two, and three for Riverside Park Improvement. So that's, that's really good news. And I think we will know by the end of the year if we are able to secure that grant. So you'll notice that, you know, gathering information is just sort of, you know, trying to understand better where, where do we stand in terms of the FEMA PA projects? Where do we stand in terms of fund balance? Where do we stand in terms of what can we expect from the Buncombe County property tax revaluation process? So all of that is information that we hope to kind of gather in the next six months or so. And hopefully by January, February, we're in a better position to, you know, use that data to kind of start to inform decisions. But again, we may not be, and we may have--
I know, that's, that's what scares me.
Can we recognize, Sheri, you had your hand up?
I have my hand up, but I can, as we hit the nail on the head, I mean, the entire reason we postponed the town hall kickoff was funding uncertainty related to the parks, then the hurricane hit, and that compounded that question. And to be prudent with our finances, we cannot move forward on a town hall until we have some of these questions answered, and we know exactly what our nut is to crack.
Sheri, wouldn't you agree that we can do a lot of the information gathering and starting to--
Absolutely. Shannon's on 100% steering you in the right direction. We need to have these discussions and see--
Okay.
--what, what our, you know, needs are and if, what the council, how, what direction you want us to move in, so that we're ready when the time comes.
And new consultants are major expenditures until we get there.
Okay.
Just as she said, over the next six months or so, a lot of those questions are going to be answered. We'll know where we stand with FEMA, we'll know what sort of funding requirements, if there are any left related to the park. You know, we put some money aside for this project that's still reserved in your fund balance and will remain there. We didn't budget an amount this year because of the requirements for the park--
And that's growing every month.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Interest rates are good.
Interest rates are good. We're out of pocket a lot of money for FEMA, but, so that, you know, takes away from that. Even if we, even if, and this is just a hypothetical schedule, even if we end up following this hypothetical schedule and we find ourselves at the beginning of fiscal year '27 thinking, yeah, we're going to go ahead and start action, we're not even committed, even at that point, we're not committing ourselves to a particular path. You know, because you might just do an RFQ for, start an RFQ for architectural services, doesn't mean that you're breaking ground, so. But it will take a long time to put action into place. So we want to be thinking about it so that we will be ready in a year or two years or three years when the time comes that it's appropriate and we feel financially secure.
Having said that, the status quo that exists today is not acceptable for another two or three years, is it? To run this town in the most effective manner and get accredited with the police department?
I mean, can we do it? Sure. Is it ideal? No. You know, but I mean--
That's important to say.
But are there other, but are there--
Can we do it?
What are there other steps we can take to make it better for y'all?
So we have been trying to do some sort of modest improvements, just to make our work spaces a little bit more comfortable, a little more, you know, pleasant. We're looking at doing the same in the Public Works Building, just so the staff also have some, you know, some of the same kind of amenities, niceties. We have flexible work schedules to kind of help avoid conflict between office mates, you know, where we are doubled up or tripled up in offices. We don't have a plan to add any administrative staff at this stage for the next year or so. We are, if we expand staff, we're really looking primarily at parks maintenance in the future. So that would not be a staff person based out of this building, it would probably be out of the Public Works Building. So, so can we get by? Yeah, yeah, I think, I'm confident we can.
But as you and I have talked before, if you need some space relief, there are some inner solutions, portable buildings.
Yep.
Either here or at the Public Works.
Yep.
We got a lot of real estate down there.
Yeah. The portable buildings also come with their downsides, but, you know, so you would just have to kind of weigh the pros and cons and what your needs are. And that's part of what we're trying to do now, is like, really, what are the needs? What are the goals? You know, and just to help make sure that we don't miss any options that could have been considered, and we didn't because we rushed into a decision.
Is our evidence room situation now solved for the foreseeable future in terms of security and, you know what I'm talking about, flooding and other things?
I think there's one additional improvement we really want to make.
Is it expensive or complicated?
It's moderately expensive.
Well--
So that's, that's some of the questions. You know, at some point, as I meant, I use the car metaphor, you know, at some point it doesn't make sense to keep investing in that. I don't know if we're there yet. If we know, if as a result of this process and these discussions, we know that we're not going to be prepared to do anything for two to three years, then yes, then that helps us make some decisions about investing in these facilities. You know, or do we want to do an interim? Do we want to split functions into the two buildings we have in order to be able to do a proper accreditation, space needs for the police department? That's another option, but there's a consequence to that, not just financially, but, you know, you're giving up a community center as well, so.
I think this is a perfect time to have this conversation because these things are going to take some time to percolate, and we have no, we have no need to commit to any of it in any way yet, but--
Agreed.
--we have had a year to absorb the effects since the last year, and now I think we're smarter and we can think about that with a more informed view of the future, of what it could be. So I think this is a great time to be doing this.
Yeah, and, and I will say, I think Helene has inspired some, I wouldn't say new priorities necessarily, but it might have shifted some of the priorities some, and it's put more emphasis on building community and resiliency. And a town hall redevelopment or significant investment or renovation of one of the sites could support some of those resiliency goals as well. That's one of the potential opportunities for grant funding. So that's something that we can, you know, try to explore in these coming months and see if there's, there's a good fit there.
And that's actually, ties in with the 17 different aspects of the council plan--
Right.
--process, too.
Yep.
More fodder.
Yes, sir.
I've been wrestling this idea of the passive issue of critical needs and funding of critical needs. And the primary wrestling of doing is having no idea what the community actually wants. And I realize that it's not a coherent model of a community, right, idea. Let me tell you a bit about this thinking I've been doing, or the experiences I've had. I began by thinking, if you add up COVID inflation, Helene, uncertainty of federal funding, uncertainty of federal policy, that now, unlike our peer municipalities, it's not the time to raise taxes. That was my point of view, COVID, that for 2025, we have revaluation coming up, the question's going to be, as many of us know, this is going to be revenue neutral or we're going to propose increase. As I talk to people in the community at different events and at different campaign events, but also non-campaign events, it's rough that I'm hearing a lot of support, obviously through not raising taxes. I'm hearing people saying, what we need are improvement of roads and sidewalks, even though we know that most of our roads are not maintained. Well, we know that most of our roads are not maintained by the town Woodland. When people say we need better roads and sidewalks, we say, well, that's actually a subset, you might be able to prove that 30%, that, I think you said 70%, are maintained by state and by the county. I hear people say code enforcement, and I get that a lot of action. And it's come from the center of my mind in terms of the fact that we outsource for valid reasons, code enforcement to Buncombe County. And this is a special time, code enforcement is under water, Buncombe County has had staff issues, maybe you have to repair the cut ring from a major storm, right? It's hard to say, oh, code enforcement, this is the new normal this year for Helene. But I do hear from a lot of people about code enforcement. And code enforcement, what they mean by that is, why are we having more proliferation of lots with these cars? Why are those jumpers allowed? Why is that building, which seems like it's falling down? Well, you know, that's what they're really talking about. They're really not talking about, oh, I heard loud music from my neighbor.
I hear this every--
I hear this repeatedly, and code enforcement is, is staff. I would say, you know, I understand that remedying a situation doesn't occur overnight. There are steps that you go through, you know, the time to go and say, well, I'll do this or we're going to tear your house down. But it does require staff, and it might require us to have our own staff. What I don't hear people, and I hear people say, community center. I hear people say, place to meet, oh, Weaverville Community Center, wow, you know, think about the revenue that the Weaverville Community Center must generate from rentals to, for events. Because I don't hear people say town hall. And where I'm going with this is, I'm really, information needed. I don't know if, what can we also need for a referendum? And I don't know what, and I don't know how to hear from the community, referendum or something else, on what they feel the most critical need is, should we propose tax increases that would be dedicated to that critical need? Obviously, when you have a tax increase, it's easiest to just say general fund, and then we will decide, you know, here, there, and everywhere. But if I weigh these different things that I've been talking about, it's been a hell of a year. It's been a hell of a past three years economically for a lot of people, and we have these critical needs. The missing piece for me is, I don't know what significant segment of our community thinks about this issue, and I sure as hell would like to find out, but I don't know the right mechanism or guess, not there.
Yeah, can I--
Put out my information.
Can I respond to some of what you said? So first, when it comes to what does the community want? So we do have a goal of community engagement. So I do think we want to spend some time trying to figure out how to effectively engage the community on this subject. I would be very careful about code enforcement. You mentioned there's a need for code enforcement. I think what is probably--
I hear from--
You hear from people that there's a need. I think there, there is a really big need from, from staff's perspective on educating people about code enforcement, because there is very significant limitations to what we can achieve. And I would, I would want to caution us all very carefully to tackle that very slowly because you do not want to invest in code enforcement staff and have them sit idle because they can't actually do the enforcement that people want them to do. So, so there is a whole education side of that. Now, can we do more? Sure, yeah, we could do more. But is that a full-time position? I don't think so. So I think that's something we want to be careful about. And then finally, the community center, that is something-- Now, the town hall redevelopment plan contemplated sort of a height, like, sort of a hybrid. It wouldn't have all of the space or amenities necessarily that maybe the Weaverville Community Center would have, but we were trying to figure out a way where we could kind of do both. We could have a meeting space where people, or not a party, but like a room where people could rent for parties, and it would be a bigger chamber that we would maybe somehow-- Yeah, so you're familiar with that. So, so there was interest in that, as well as having like a community room that would be smaller for smaller groups to gather, and then, of course, having outdoor space. So, yeah, we're definitely interested in that. And then what the future of, it is hard to talk about town hall and not also talk about the community center, because it's another significant facility, and, you know, what the future of this building is may be somewhat tied to the future of that building as well. So.
And my final comment would be, that what I'm really talking about is, in terms of wanting to know what parts of the community, of the community wants, and I realize that this is, doesn't necessarily tie you to do, necessarily tie you to what the community wants. We have to make decisions sometimes based on what we think is best for the community. It's a, you know, back and forth, but I am well aware, I think, that if you do this, you can't do that. That is paradoxical. Those three things that I mentioned, it's what I hear frequently from the community, community center, roads, curbs, sidewalks, and code enforcement. And I understand that there may be need for education for code enforcement. I certainly need education.
I obviously do, too.
And I have a, I have an idea on how to do that. Continue, please.
But in my mind, there's this issue of what we've committed to already, that needs to be completed, and what should be that next step, once that is complete? Because I don't believe we can have three next steps. I could be wrong. But if it's going to be this, then we're not going to be going back. And it would be nice to know in advance, in order to be an information input into our deliberations, it would be nice to know in advance what a significant one you has thought about, this, this, and I'll stop there.
Well, I mean, I do want to be careful. I don't think, I mean, most people, if you give them a choice between a community center and a town hall, they're not going to go for a new town hall, you know?
Well, they have a community center, town hall as an entity. I think that was the start.
Yeah, I do, too.
I would not propose, oh, you know, and even if it means there's a smaller community center, but I listened to what you just said, that it's space, that it's modern, that when you go into it, it doesn't look like, not even before the Montessori school, where parents went in the swag, or you can do some repairs. I've been in that community center, I'm doing home command, you know? This does not look good. And then you go to Weaverville, right? There is a halfway point between those two.
Yeah.
And I get what you're saying. It may be those three areas, roads, sidewalks, possibly stormy, or I could be wrong about that. That's one. Town hall, community center, that's two. And then the other is staff. Staff or what? One might be code enforcement. I don't know enough about staff needs. So I'm not saying, let's do a poll of market. I'm saying that information needed for me is knowing that if we do one thing, we're not going to be doing two.
Yeah. I think that's part of the financial picture, is, you know, how much, I mean, we've, we've done some preliminary analysis, and I, I think we, we know enough to know that if we were to embark on a ambitious town hall slash community center plan that includes all of the things we've talked about, that doesn't include any other funding sources and, you know, we're financing it, you know, it's going to leave very little room for other projects. And--
That's my sentence.
Yes.
And the sentence I had to that is, I would love input from a community in such a way, and I have no experience in getting input from a community, in such a way that we felt the community thought that step was the right step, and not two and three. You're not going to get everybody to say yes to one, you know, I realize that it's not modelable, but I feel like the one piece that's missing for me is what do significant parts of the community want? And that's a tough one. I have a crazy meds and--
All right. That's good stuff. It's all good stuff. Anybody else? I don't want anybody to feel left out. Okay. Let's keep moving.
Well, that's pretty much it. So, yeah, yeah, I mean, this, these, this is all very helpful. So this is just going to help kind of inform how we move forward. So I, you know, I think what I'm hearing is, we really want to think thoughtfully about how do we engage the community in an effective and productive way, you know, collecting information so we kind of get a clearer sense of what our overall-- so we kind of get a clearer sense of what our overall financial picture is. And, you know, this is exactly what we were hoping for, is just, you know, getting some direction and to kind of know, you know, what, what should we be focusing on over the next six months or so. And we may, you know, well, I'll just stop there and say, there's more work to come.
And I will go back and look at these. I've just been looking under the lens, the lens of no, until we know something. So, I will, before I leave, go back and look at each of these.
Good.
And I would, based on what we're talking about here, I've talked about code enforcement for a long time. I would love for us to have some code information, education. I think that would be fabulous.
I have an idea. I have, I have an idea, whether it's a council meeting or another work session. I looked at six properties yesterday. I mean, when you're, I guess, when you're the mayor, you, you get the complaints. There's a long list of them. What if I put them as slides? I've got detailed pictures. And what if you told us as we go through them, yeah, this one clearly, no, this one, and here's why? Would we need to have somebody come and help us? Or do you, are you well versed on that, you and-
I'm pretty sure Ricky and I can handle that and Marie. I, I think we can handle that.
For example, that trailer at 20 Garden Street, it's been that way for years. It's a fire hazard. I mean, it's, it's a number of things from a layman's standpoint. Is that not one? I know you looked at it recently, Ricky.
So, that's not, that's not one that has a tree in it right now, is it?
No, that's a very, that's a different one.
Okay. They, so-
That's a different one. No, it's, it's a tree that's been there for years. It's decrepit, it's covered in vines.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely-
My neighbors are complaining about it.
Yeah, if you want to send us some of those, then we can take a sampling and talk about that. And, and if I may, I'd like to offer another, another way. So, so having that conversation is things very helpful. Council will become, will walk away better informed, you know, but how many people in the community we reach will probably be more limited. And of course, you all are ambassadors and you'll share some of that. But a way to more effectively reach other sections of our community, I think, is to consider hosting a, like a citizens academy of sorts. Like, I think we're not a very big community or big municipality to have a full-blown citizens academy, but we can have a day or two days or three days where we have sessions where we talk about police and enforcement and we talk about water and we talk about roads and sanitation, we talk about road repair, and we cover all of the things that people would potentially be interested in.
That's, that's, organizing, that's a big task. I'd be hesitant to ask your team to even, I'd be very hesitant to make that a priority right now.
I hear you. It's, I mean-
I'd be wary of a couple of town halls, baby.
I think we, yeah, okay.
We're not disagreeing.
I like the citizens academy.
I don't know that it has to be too time consuming, but-
I think that initial step would be educating us, council, about code enforcement. And because when people tell me code enforcement, they're primarily talking about one thing. That is an eyesore. That is ugly. How can that building stand up? They're talking, you know, and that's why your slides, your comments on them, I would find very useful because I find myself, when I hear these things, I'm no jack about code enforcement yet, but I'd like to.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we-
What's possible and what's not.
Yeah, I'd be very happy to cover some of this if, if the mayor can share me. Yeah, that'd be great if you can do that. Yeah, if you want to send like a picture and an address.
Animals too. I mean, all sorts of different things.
Yeah. Now-
Animals. You always, you know, okay, this animal's chained up here, this, you know, but I do hear that as well.
There's, you know, and also, TextMyGov will be launched pretty soon and that's going to have that reporting function. So, people who see property or they have a concern about a sanitation violation or whatever, you know, they'll be able to report that and we'll be able to, to kind of-
Will it have a dashboard or reporting function where people want to know, we'll be able to look at?
Yep.
Council member Thornton?
So, going back to the comparison between a town hall and the academy, I've noticed, I, I would support an academy kind of a, a situation because when you just have a town hall, it tends to be open topic, you know, which is fine. But I've, I've felt badly for people, for the citizens at town halls that we've had in the past. We had a town hall on the, what to do about a town hall. What-
Well, that's better.
Did I just say that?
We had a constructive town hall on short-term news though, if you remember.
Yep.
And the annexation.
We did, but let me, let me make my point, if I can get, get myself back on track. People would say, would make a suggestion as to the location of a new town hall. And we had already done a lot of study on different locations. And there were three, three or so people that said, well, we should put it here, we should put it there. And they were just met with, no, we already studied that. And if they had, I just felt like if they had been better informed before they came to the town hall, or if there had been some, a presentation at the town hall to get them caught up with what we've already studied, that their questions might have been better.
Hazel, to that point, it may be that a kind of town hall, it's not a citizens academy on a specific topic rather than what, in terms of pressure on staff, rather than a wide-ranging set of topics might make sense.
Yeah, so that's another good point.
What I had envisioned was, say, maybe three days with six topics. So, on each day, you cover two topics. So, people could come to one or both sessions on that particular day if they're interested. They could come to all three and learn about all six. It could be something like that. So, we would have the ability to sort of focus the information that we share. So, if it's not, like, if people don't care at all about this or that, then they-
Would it also be something that we could run the camera and make available?
Uh, yeah, I imagine we could, yeah.
I think that would be nice. That way people could watch it at their leisure too.
It's just, unfortunately, it's just not, you know, this is part of the technology.
I know.
It's not as effective of a learning environment by watching the video.
I get that, but just for those who might want to participate and cannot be on hand.
It doesn't really seem like an either or between-
Yeah. They both, they both are important and serve-
Purposes. If I can circle back, will staff be able to capture all of our brilliant posted notes and maybe circulate this?
Yeah, we'll summarize it, all included in your weekly update at the end of the week.
Your slides, there's some good-
Oh, sure. Yeah, these are posted. They're posted on the website now. Yeah.
Thank you. What else? Anybody from council? Anybody from staff? Do you-
Staff?
What are y'all hearing? What are you seeing here? Is this, is this good? I'd include everybody. Don't be afraid.
I would appreciate the opportunity to host a citizens academy. I think I may be a little naive to what community wants to hear. There are things often that I want to talk about because I think are important, but that's not necessarily what is on others' agenda. So, I would love to hear from how, like, what, what do you think community would want to know from, from your interactions with people in community? What are they asking you? So that I can kind of curtail it to what you think is appropriate for within right now.
I've seen the, I've seen the textbook for Weaville's. They have a mini Weaville citizens academy. It's pretty, it's very thorough. We'd have to do a mini version.
I mean, Asheville has a very robust one, pretty, pretty detailed and extensive, but they have a lot more to cover than we do.
Right.
Yeah.
A part of this code enforcement, Chief, some of those questions might go to you because there's one, there's a property I looked at yesterday where there are a bunch of cars that have been sitting there for years in this driveway with no tags. Does it matter that they have tags or not?
Nope.
Then it does matter that they're cars that have been junked and sitting there for years.
It has to be inoperable and untagged. Yeah.
And I hadn't seen this one before yesterday. And you've been very effective, like the ones over by the church. They were, you and Ricky, they were gone and those, those neighbors were ecstatic. Those cars have been there for years.
Inoperability.
What's that?
Who decides inoperability?
It's state law.
No, I mean, who-
Oh, oh, they literally just fire it up and crank it and move it back and forth.
Like that, that truck, my understanding is they still can't get that truck to run. They're cutting the grass to keep you off their caddies.
They, they've got to crank it.
They have.
They've got to crank it.
I have a friend that lives caddy corner behind it and he's like, okay.
And, so-
All right. I don't want to belabor that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot we can cover on this topic, but I'll just share one little small piece about code enfor, this, this kind of code enforcement, which we, you know, junked vehicles and sanitation, these, and minimums, minimum housing, these tend to, I wouldn't call them like the nuisance category necessarily, but sometimes it can be. And it's not really like a police concern. It's really more, but it's also not zoning, even though zoning enforcement staff often end up doing this kind of enforcement. But the laws are pretty specific and they're pretty limiting. And as I understand it, it is largely because this affects the lowest income population the most. And so, every effort to give them every opportunity to remedy the situation is provided under state law. So, it is, it is difficult to demolish a house, to, you know, get a trailer off a property, to even get a car towed. Like, it can be difficult. Most of the time when it happens, it's because the property owner is just willing and they're, they're, they're over it too, right? And they just need a little extra motivation to get it done. But I know some of the properties we're dealing with now are very much hardship cases. You know, these are people who, like, I don't have the money. You know, we would have to put a lien on their property, take care of the demolition ourselves and then have to try to collect the lien. It's, it's, we can do it, it's just hard. And then that also creates some, it can create some ill will in the community. So, we just want to be careful. So, I just, I just hope for that.
When a neighbor gives us a picture at night where there's a flame in a building that's dilapidated, we, we're compelled.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I don't want to belabor. Anybody else?
No.
This is good. Thank you for putting this on.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Thank you guys very much.
Yeah.
If there's a firm of business, is there, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
I want to pay her say yes?
Yes.
Adjourned at 4:24.